We're supposed to be broken.
They can be broken.
Here we are. We're breaking it right now.
Should all go smoothly, right?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 3, 2024 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, the Chair. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts' General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16, 2021. Yarmouth Planning Board will hold public meeting on January 3, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. Public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access provided on the notice of meeting available on the town website. I'll begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta, Will Rubenstein.
Present.
Jim Saban.
Present.
Peter Slovac.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Here.
Chris Vincent. Joanne Crowley, Chair, is present. Seeing that we have a quorum present, I'll now call the meeting to order, and I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Me?
So this evening, on our agenda, we have one primary item. It is the Revised Housing Production Plan. Mary Wagon, our housing expert, has joined us here this evening to give us a presentation on the revised and the endorsed plan made by the Select Board on December 5, 2023. In our packets are specific revisions to the plan that we saw about a year ago. We had hearings in late 2022. Then we met and reviewed the revised plan in January, almost to this date, a year ago, and we've had some subsequent revisions. So, Mary, I'll turn it over to you, and we look forward to hearing what the improvements are. Thank you.
Great. So, good evening. For the record, my name is Mary Wagon. I'm the town's Affordable Housing Program Administrator, and I'm here tonight to present to the Planning Board the most current version of the town's housing production plan. I'm joined by members of the Community Housing Committee, including Drew Kraus, who's here in person. He's the Vice Chair of the Committee. Online, we have Myra Sahenich and Lee Hamilton, and they're both zooming in. As Joanne said, the Chair said that since we last met, the HPP was revised. It was edited to incorporate certain comments, all the comments from the Board of Selectmen that they made in August of 2023. We brought it back to the Select Board on December 5, 2023, with all those edits incorporated, and they endorsed it. Because the Planning Board, both the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen need to endorse the plan, and because there's some significant changes, we thought it prudent to bring the plan back to you. So, the vote on December 5 by the Select Board is an approval on the condition that the Planning Board likewise endorses the plan. So, it's a five-year strategic plan for housing for the town. It gives us greater control over affordable housing development and provides an up-to-date blueprint to help Yarmouth further its progress towards meeting its 10% goal for affordable housing as set by the state under Chapter 40B. You know, it includes, it's a thick document, and includes a needs assessment, identifies current challenges to meeting our housing goals, sets local housing goals and priorities, and prescribes proactive strategies to get there. Just want to note that the adoption of the HPP does not mandate the town employ any of these strategies by the state. It does not preclude the utilization by the state for any strategies not identified in the HPP. So, it's still our program, even though it's going to be endorsed by, hopefully approved by, the state. It doesn't mean that's what we have to do. We're not, like, all of a sudden mandated by law to follow this plan. But it does give us a blueprint on where to go, and it assures the state that we're taking affordable housing seriously. You've received a copy of the HPP with the red lines. These edits include the most recent data on median sale prices for single-family homes and condominiums in Yarmouth, and I'd like to thank Peter Slovac for providing that information. It's also, on page 69, we have an updated production table with the citation to Forest Road removed. That originally I had down as 45 units counting towards our 10%. That's been removed per the request of the Board of Selectmen. Just didn't feel that the HPP was answering enough of those questions that the community had about the development, so it's been removed from the HPP. You see in your memo that there's several new strategies or strengthened strategies, such as linking housing with the development of wastewater improvements, promoting high-quality mixed-use development, protecting drinking wells. There's a whole list that the Board of Selectmen really wanted to emphasize in the plan or add to the plan, and they really cited the vision work that the Planning Board had done and the planner had done. Through that COVID time period, it was incredible that you got that done. They really wanted to embrace that vision and make sure that vision that has been set by the town goes into every single one of our plans. And we have extensive notes from that August meeting, which I've shared with Kathy, the Town Planner, and our Director of Community Development, Karen Green, because they kept bringing up the vision and the local comprehensive plan and how this was all important, so that we just don't miss any word that they said as you're going forward with the LCP. So, these changes are listed in the memo. I can bring you through those changes or skip right to the zoning strategies, whatever you guys want.
Well, with that, Mary, maybe I'll open it up to board members who may have questions, be our comments outside of the zoning section, which you've provided the full section of the plan for us. And when we get there, I want to pay particular focus on the two brand-new additions to the zoning portion of this. But I'd like to open it up to any comments or questions on other elements of the plan as it's been rewritten. I'd also like to comment that I did go back, Mary, and look at all of the things we had asked you to do before, and you have done everything we asked you to do before, including changes such as accessory dwelling units shall be known as accessory apartments. You changed certain tables as we had requested. So, as far as I can see from our own minutes, you have accommodated all of the requests that the Planning Board has made on the prior draft, and hopefully if there are some suggestions here this evening that aren't too onerous, we do not want to have to go back to the Select Board. So, there may be some minor editorial changes that we recommend. So, I'd like to open it up, and I'd like to start with Mr. Smith, if that's okay, Ken, if you have anything in particular.
Madam Chair, at this point, I don't have any specific questions. I figured I'd hold them off to the end of the presentation.
That's fine. Mr. Slovac, I know you've already written up a comment that you wanted to address. Kathy had sent along a note to me.
Right, right. The median sale price was noted, and Mary had given me the page where it appeared. As far as Yarmouth, along with a few other towns in there, on page 29, it shows Yarmouth having the lowest median sale price on Cape Cod, which I thought was important. Maybe you wish it, I mean, you know, I wish it wasn't on page 29, because they really jump in quickly on page 1 and start to pound home how Yarmouth is not affordable, but yet we are actually probably the most affordable town from a median sale price standpoint. So, anyway, I had made that comment, but, and then I made another comment about the tax rate. And I understand the consultant, you know, her role in this whole thing. It's just, it's sort of a, not a correct statement, but...
I think the consultant was comparing our tax rate to tax rates off Cape. And so...
Yeah, and it's a small point in a 140-page document.
Thank you for reading the document.
But unfortunately, those small points in my work, I catch them quickly. So, anyway. So, I'm fine moving forward. Joanne.
Well, you know, Peter, when I read your comment, I think it is important, and it's a minor change. Chatham has one of the lowest tax rates, I believe. Lower.
Yeah.
Lower. And you think of the median house, the median sale price of a home in Chatham. I think that some reference to what Peter has suggested in terms of it not being a determinant of affordability is important, and if we can accommodate some language to that effect, I think that might be helpful.
I think that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else, Peter?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Will?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to wait until we get into the zoning strategy section and have that conversation. I don't have any comments at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Saban.
Just a couple of quick ones. I would piggyback on Peter's comments and understand the relationship about tax rates, because during the '60s and early '70s, a primary driver of the retirement population here on the Cape Cod was because it was much cheaper for you to live here based upon your real estate taxes. It's not much cheaper to live here anymore. So, that argument I don't think flushes out anymore. And a tax rate is nothing more than the results of taking the town's budget and then taking the value of the total town and arriving at a rate based upon those two parts of the equation. So, tax rates really have, I mean, I guess in one way you could argue, gee, if you were going to buy in Dennis or Yarmouth, your tax rate may be lower in Dennis, but it doesn't mean you're buying a less expensive house. It means you're just paying for your school a little bit less than the people on the other side of the creek that's looking back at you, that you can laugh at because we pay more. But tax rates are really kind of not a big indicator of affordability. And I would again agree with Peter that Yarmouth is probably the most affordable town on Cape Cod, if not the most affordable. The only other question I have is one with regards to, and maybe we're going to go into this, but the summary of the housing strategies, and there are certain things that have been assigned to different committees, et cetera. So, I see a lot of these are assigned to the Planning Board. And I'm assuming that when we have these types of actions, you know, it's always good to have some suggestions of action items. Who's going to do this? What do you want us to do? How do you want us to do that? You know, so when I'm reading the document, there's a lot of discussion about, for example, gray field redevelopment. Have we identified what those properties are as an action item so that we can start working with those gray field identified properties to say, hey, by the way, we've got this, that, or the other thing for you? So, these types of documents are great to me, but if there's no action item attached to them, then we might as well go put them upstairs in the top, in the corner there where all the other reports are, because there's nothing that says do this or do that, and who should do it and how they should do it. So, great document, but I think it lacks the ability to say, these are the action items. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Mary, I do have a couple of very minor suggestions. One on page four. I'm not sure we should continue to refer to the Vision Plan as a draft.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Am I right?
This has been in the works for a little while.
Yeah, I know. It probably was a draft when this first went together. I think it was, actually. So, I'd like to suggest that we not, I think that's, I found it in only one place.
Good catch.
And the other one had to do with, it might have been one of the late attachments we got. One second. On the very last page of the package that you prepared for us on the red lining, 113, this is where I have my, I guess I spent some time thinking about this. One, very small one. I don't think you've been trying to fool UMass. You see it in the last sentence?
Oh, okay. What did I do to them?
I think it's following.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't think you've been trying to fool UMass. And I know you've had to put this together very quickly, and I know probably some AI program will correct all of these minor adjustments. But I do have concerns about this from a perspective that's not housing, but from a perspective of the other committees that I'm on here in town. And short-term rental income to the town is important, and we need to find a balance between that and its effect on affordable housing. So, I would like to recommend a more general, and we don't want to wordsmith here, because that's not what you want, and that's not what this document needs. The document, I think, is very well-written, but this one, it's brand-new. I don't think the public has seen this.
Not as extensively as the other ones.
And I think had something like this been in the first round of public reviews, there would have been some comments. So, my general comment is, one, can we make this just a more broad suggestion to simply evaluate seasonal and short-term rentals on the housing market?
Yeah, that's what it's intended to say. So...
Because I don't want it to be all negative. It isn't all negative. Short-term rentals are not a bad thing, in my opinion, based on what I know from other committees. They generate a significant amount of income, tax revenue, that we are using to support our sewer project. So, all of these housing strategies in here that reference the sewer project, the sewer project needs the money from short-term rentals in order to be effective.
Yep.
So, I'm just asking if we could just make this somewhat more general and not jump to recommendations on things that I think, quite frankly, could cause some flashing, such as increasing taxes and limiting short-term rentals. I think those could be lightning rods for some in the community who would not understand what that is. They've never seen it before. How does our plan have this in there now? So, my suggestion is to make it more general and not jump to recommendations that are so specific.
Well, would it be good if we said it amplified the positive impacts?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I was suggesting is, you know, some kind of language that, although it's seen as a potential and growing pressure, it's also been an important source of funding for the town. So, I just think it needs some balance, and so that was the one that I spent a little bit of time on, thinking about the language. I'm not sure what other members think about that, or if I'm...
I think it's a very clear and balanced statement that, you know, short-term rentals are important to the town. And I do think that, you know, a positive spin to, you know, part of that paragraph would be a positive.
Yep, I can work on that. Do you know what our impact tax is? Is it...
Oh, it's a layered one.
It's not 3%, is it?
Yeah, we get about $1.3 million that goes to searing, and then like another 300,000 to 400,000 that goes into the general, because 75% of those go to sewer and 25% go to the general budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think it's a layered, if I recall, the short-term rental is a layered tax.
What do you mean by layered tax?
Some goes to the state, some goes to us. We don't get all of it.
That's right.
So, the Commonwealth might not want to lose all of its money either, although they get a smaller percentage. I believe it is state and local.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'll leave that as it may, and I trust that the Select Board won't have any issue with this just being a more general evaluation of this particular housing market.
So, I have to let you know that the one Select Board member who suggested this attended a talk of a study of the short-term rentals in Provincetown. And the reason why he wants it studied here is because it's always kind of identified as a pressure on the affordable housing market. And what Provincetown found was that there was no additional pressure caused by the short-term rentals. So, he wanted to show that. He wanted to study that carefully in Yarmouth, too, because there's pressure to limit the short-term rentals in town because of year-round housing. But people are seeing that it just hasn't worked out that way on the Cape, because the Cape is special.
Yep.
So, that was the intent.
Then we're on the same page. Then we are totally on the same page.
But nobody studied it to really know, but UMass Dartmouth Policy Center knows how to do it.
Yeah, and we've read, you know, at least the news reports about the Provincetown study. I mean, it was pretty clear that there was no adverse impact.
No, and you're talking two different markets, absolutely, between Provincetown and Yarmouth from that standpoint.
So, if the idea is to get a study about Yarmouth, yeah, let's do it, and talk about all the great benefits of short-term rentals, as well as maybe nothing, nothing's wrong with them here.
Certainly, I don't want to legislate them away, because they're the goose that's laying the little golden eggs for us. We need them.
Yeah. I just think the language, it had negate in there. It had mitigate. It had not-so-positive language, presumptively that it was a bad thing.
Right.
Good catch.
Okay.
Makes sense, yeah.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Why don't we go, we'll jump to the zoning section. Marion, you can walk us through.
So, that starts on page 78. Okay. And some of these haven't changed. There are six altogether. So, we'll start with number one.
It starts on...
Oh, okay. Number one was revised, the Affordable Housing Bylaw. This was not redlined. Page 78, 79 was not redlined.
Yep.
So, that is in the works. The Housing Committee is working out that cash payment in lieu of affordable housing formula to get that to you for your consideration for a zoning bylaw modification. So, that's done. Okay. Number two, modify accessory apartment requirements. It was modified to reflect that the bylaw passed.
Yeah, great.
Well, that's good. And the resources needed at this time is just the Town Planner to, you know, process that approval with the AG's office. We're getting lots of calls. I sit in the same office space as the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, we're getting a lot of calls. What is that, when is that bylaw going to be effective? So, anyways, so Kathy is working with that, as well as Dolores Fallon, who is the Board Secretary for the ZBA. So...
She's going to keep track. I've asked her to keep track of all of the accessory apartment. She's updated the list that she started before when we were looking into it, so that we'll know all the accessory apartments that go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we can track and see how the new bylaw might impact that.
Can I just follow up, because I can't remember. What is the timing as to when people can actually file? Is that just to be determined by the AG?
No. Well, we had the, it's basically 90 days from December 7, when it was submitted.
Oh, okay.
So, it should be fairly quick.
Can I respond in that time?
Yes, it's statutory. So, basically...
So, we're 33% of the way there.
I'm sorry, Will.
No, it's okay.
They could actually file now, Kathy. They just can't, nothing can be done with it.
Right. The way it was left with Town Council is that if you want to apply for it, you can apply for it now, but he recommended that they keep the hearing open until that's finalized, and then they, there was one recent family accessory where they were notified that, you know, you could wait, and they're like, no, no, we just want it for family. I think they were going to just move ahead with it. But they could always convert it later, because the bylaw allows for that as well.
Right.
Kathy?
I'm sorry. No, I was just thinking out loud. So, potentially in March, we could start to see some of these on the zoning board agendas.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And it's good to know they're being tracked, because I do think that's one of the things that, well, none of us really know, are how many applications are there going to be, and where, I think, is the other really interesting factor, is the geography of where they're going to be popping up. Thank you.
Will she track the size, I mean, the characteristics of each unit, the size, number of bedrooms, so that we can sort of understand?
I can ask her to do that. I don't think she's quite that detailed, but I can ask her to do that.
Yeah, I think it would be good to know.
Number of bedrooms, the size of the unit, lower level, what type of unit, where it was located, you know, if it was a basement unit or a garage or where.
So, conversion or new construction.
We want a full report on everything.
It sounds like quite the, it sounds like quite the matrix of, it sounds like a spreadsheet that's growing and growing, many different columns.
I think we can start doing that from moving forward. I'm not going to make it come back. But, yeah, that would be great.
Okay. The next one is on page 81. Again, this did not get redlined. This was allow a wider range of housing types, something that we always have on the back burner and usually pops up when we have, like, when we did the motel bylaw and the Village Center Overlay Districts bylaw, that kind of popped up. Number four is amend the Cluster Development Bylaw to promote affordable housing. This is something that our consultant had great faith that we could do this. But we might get more busy with the next two first. So, again, number four did not get redlined. Number five is allow housing concentration linked to infrastructure with mixed use in sync with economic development goals. So, this was something that the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, really felt was important. And there's a lot in there, because I did, the current status was that we passed the money. We approved the money for the searing. We got a $3.5 million MassWorks grant to advance the Phase 1 of the searing. These major infrastructure improvements, you know, complement our local zoning for the motel bylaw and VCOD. And it's really, that area is the heart of our commercial corridor. The town's Affordable Housing Trust has made available $140,000 for predevelopment loans for the redevelopment of gray fields. So, if there's a particular property that needs some help and they want to redevelop, they can come to the Affordable Housing Trust. The Affordable Housing Trust has not, has just made the announcement that these funds are available. They have not, you know, gone out and talked to any specific property owner about it. But that's a good suggestion that you had, and something that we can talk about as we go to implement that.
It's just a simple of, you know, if people don't know these things are available or they're identified as, then they can't take advantage of them. So, if there's a gray, gray field, gray stone?
Gray field.
Gray field that we know about, then it should be upon us as housing advocates, as economic development advocates, or whoever representing within the community, should reach out to them as part of our plan to say, hey, by the way, these are available to you. And then they may go, oh, lights came on. Let's redevelop. I'm not going to say which particular properties, because I happen to think of a couple of them that may apply. But we should be, as a community, proactive in all these plans in identifying, you know, one of the things you talk about is, you know, properties that are REO-type properties or bank-owned properties or properties that have passed in our state. There should be a process that the town should be taking to identify housing so that we're building, not necessarily having to build more, but, you know, redevelop or reuse, like, some of the things that have been done already in the past, but to continue to advocate for that and make it happen. It's all great to put this stuff on paper, but if we don't have people taking action, this is, like I said, filing.
The trust was working with the developer, and we thought that this was going to solve the problem. They ended up going into Dennis. They got a MassWorks grant to do a development in Dennis. So, they're now busy in Dennis. But anyways, I'll bring that comment back to the trust and figure out what's the best way. The trust might not be the mechanism to do it, because they're the awarding body. You know, it might need to be somebody within arm's length, you know, spearheading that effort, but I'll bring that to them. They'll love that comment.
Maybe it's the CEDC. I mean, housing is a big part of economic engine. If we don't have people to live in the houses, we can't grow our businesses.
I've always been hesitant to do it myself, although we have, the Housing Committee has talked about it a little bit, but haven't quite found the right home, you know what I mean, for the identity. But I like, I would love it if CEDC does that. Are you on the CEDC?
I'm no longer on. I was. That was me.
Peter is. Okay. Well, there you go. Also, in 2023, the town secured $100,000 Housing Choice Grant from the state to identify incentives... from the state to identify incentives for mixed-use development, including possible, the possible establishment of a Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-R, Smart, Smart Growth Zoning District. So this is where the zoning kicks in, is this Chapter Forty-R, um, where, um, you know, it, it, the purpose is to, to identify and promote new commercial development via mixed-use development. So we know that housing, right, can do the job of redeveloping Route Twenty-Eight, but we have this special, you know, area that's really our economic corridor, right? So we don't want housing to outcompete the commercial space. So it's this mixed-use piece we have to figure out. Um, there's a lot of challenges with respect to financing, um, affordable housing development, um, multi-use rental buildings with a commercial component. Um, the, the underwriters don't like it. Um, we've had two, uh, qualified, very good developers on Route Twenty-Eight do some work on Route Twenty-Eight. And we asked them, can you put in a commercial component? And they both said, nope. It would just really, it would bump them down from being competitive to get the low-income housing tax grant. Now, now, maybe the tax credit world is a little bit more flexible now, or maybe they didn't know how to do it. But, um, this would, and this piece would, this hundred thousand dollars, part of it is gonna go towards a consultant that's gonna help us through that process.
That, just if I can insert, that's the, one of those economic studies that we talked about when we had this, when we went through the different goals that we're looking at and talked about the LCP. So in addition to the marketing study to kind of find out what kind of businesses do we want to draw to the town of Yarmouth, part of the, it will be combined with that economic analysis, including looking at, at Forty-B projects. And also mixed-use, taking a look at our Village Center Overlay District, you know, maybe this is a case where we need to start modifying the percentage of mixed-use that we allow in VCOD projects now that we have sewer ring. So all of these types of things are kind of being lumped in with those economic development studies that are forthcoming, which will then be linked into the LCP.
When you say modify the percentage, what, what percentage are we at now?
Minimum fifteen percent right now.
Commercial?
Yeah, which is pretty low. So it was, it had been higher, um, and we had gotten very, very few, um, projects. But I think now with sewer ring coming in, I think maybe we need to take another look at that and see what we want it to be.
So that will be there, that will be very interesting. The other thing is, you know, you could, you could have different bonuses with, as you increase the amount of commercial space that's in the development. You know what I mean? Well, I think what we've learned from all these redevelopment bylaws on Route Twenty-Eight, it's like, you gotta try it, if it doesn't work, you change it. You, you know, you marry it with a type of subsidy. You marry it with technical assistance from the town. Um, and, and we will be leading the way. We are leading the way on Cape Cod with this. Um, so that was five. Is there any more, any questions about five?
No, I mean, other than, I'll just jump in and say, other than, you know, I strongly advocate that mixed-use is highly important, especially on Route Twenty-Eight, to start heading the town in the right direction. The whole corridor can't be affordable housing. You know, we have to have some commercial base. Fifteen percent is terribly low. Um, and we just need to start building that back up. But, you know, housing's important, as Jim touched on, you know, without workers, you can't have commercial. And without commercial, you're not gonna have workers. So it's the, you know, chicken and the egg theory, but I, I do commend you that that's important to continue this practice moving forward, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think that the state will love it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
There's so many grant opportunities.
That the way we're using housing to leverage these other resources.
There's so many Mass Work Grants out there. When I was on CDC, there's so many grants that this town is not taking advantage of. And I'm so happy to see that you're looking at alternatives now to help us get some of the funding out of the state to help us with this growth, so.
Um, and then the, the sixth one is explore housing linked to, and this kind of, I could've put three, I could've split this into three, but I put them all together, sorry. Explore housing linked to Yarmouth workers, seniors, and disabled households. So we're, we're getting more and more requests, you know, for housing that's directly linked to Yarmouth businesses, our senior population, and disabled households. So I talk about how, um, right now, seasonal employee housing is allowed, up to fifteen percent of motel rooms year-round. Um, and then year-round employee housing along Route Twenty-Eight at a density of one to four units per parcel, and the home offices are by right, allowed by right. Um, we also have town zoning that allows for congregate and assisted living units, which often serve senior and disabled households. Additionally, the town has a strong history supporting senior housing with the donation of land and off, or, and/or funds to the Yarmouth Housing Authority, Long Pond Plaza, and the Simpkin School Residence, which is fifty-five-plus. So nowadays, it's, senior housing is fifty-five-plus housing. Um, the town often encourages affordable housing developers to employ universal accessible design in smaller units suitable for smaller, older, and disabled households. So what I identified as the next step is to define workforce housing, right? There's too many, um, uh, word, you know, names being thrown out there. And no, and so it's very difficult for us as staff to get the job done when everybody's talking about different things. So I, um, I put that in there to define workforce housing and investigate funding for that. Mass Housing is interested in doing workforce housing and their income level is sixty percent of area median income to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. You know, when you get down to thirty percent, you're talking about a one, one-person household that's retired and on social security, right? So you can see sixty percent, you're starting to ta, talk about two people that are on some type of assistance. Sixty to one-twenty, it's really people that, somebody's working in the household. Um, you, you, you're not gonna hit that range if you have some type of subsidy from the federal government or the state government. So that's your workforce. Those are people that are working. You can't, can't create, I've, I've said this a million times, too, you're probably bored of it, but you can't create affordable housing and say, you can only come into affordable housing if you're working, right? Because there's, there's other ways that people have income. Um, so, um, this is how Mass Housing is start, is trying to service that worker population, is to bump up the AMI. Um, we might want to ask the state to include those units on our subsidized housing inventory. So, um, it's just a rule. It's not, it's not even a law. It's just a rule. So.
The only way you're gonna get development of workforce housing, if you do bump it up.
Yeah.
A developer's not gonna be able to make enough money if everybody's on thirty percent of, you know, of income, you know what I'm saying? So there has to be a range that makes sense from a developer's standpoint.
Right. And we want, even within affordable housing, we want mixed income. We want mixed im, I'm, I'm, I'm waiting for the next mixed-income development. Um, but even within our affordable housing, we want mixed income. We want to serve all those different areas. Um, so then I said the town should inv, investigate zoning with increased density for top-of-the-shop residential units on commercial buildings with at least a, a preference for local workers. Town should also continue to identify sites for new housing construction with smaller, accessible units with at least a preference for fifty-five-plus. Okay, you have any other suggestions or questions?
Just a, a quick question. Um, uh, being a member of the CPA CPC Committee, um, do we get credit for the things that we fund for disabled housing that happens to be in Dennis? Where do we, where do we, where, who gets credit for that?
Where, the town that it's located in.
Not where the money comes from.
Dennis gets credit for it.
So, right.
Every year, we've done Forward. Is it, am I remembering the group?
Yes.
Forward, yep. Forward is one. Um, and I think annually, or at least a couple of times, we've, we've come forward with CPA funding for them.
We helped, uh, we helped a land purchase in Dennis, right? It was something, wasn't it, a, a, a site that you would see from Gray's Beach or Taylor Bray Farm?
Yeah, but I, I thought there was also the one with, it's Forward for autistic.
Autistic, yeah. Yep, yep.
That's the one I'm thinking of, not the one.
Right. So community preservation money, the, the nice, well, a nice thing about it is you can partner with your local, like, a, a region-wide for a project, a regional project.
Right.
The back, you gotta be careful with that, though.
Partners are for dancing.
Right? Like, maybe the receiving town should let you know if they really want the money. Right? Like, during COVID, people were looking at our, our motels on Route Twenty-Eight.
But in a.
Right? And it's like, oh, we didn't, we don't want them to go to certain type of housing, right? So luckily, that didn't happen, but, um.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I, it's really just a, a, a question outside of the HPP that nowhere do we, does the town get credit for allocating resources to an important project for disabled that happens to be geographically located in another town? No? Okay. That's too bad.
We should've been the leaders in getting that done here.
That's right. That's exactly right.
That's too bad.
Should've gave for not being a leader.
Well, you know, I, I, but that brings up a really good point. You know, um, I, I, I am trying to get some veteran housing created in town.
It's important.
Yep, it's so important.
I, I know they're looking at some in Barnstable right now. There's on South Street, there's a redevelopment of a older property that's gonna be, I think it's fourteen units of veteran housing on South Street in Hyannis. We absolutely need to start looking at that as an important factor in this town.
There you go.
And maybe that's our turn.
That's right.
To, to knock on the doors of our neighbors. Say, yo, don't let me forget to do that. Because even, even though Forward, you know, we gave, we didn't give the highest percentage for that development, you know, it's, but it's still helped them.
Oh, yeah, big time.
Yeah.
And we're very willing to give when it doesn't happen in our backyard, you know.
So those are all the zoning.
That's the zoning-related ones.
Okay.
Yep.
Any, any other, any other questions or comments or?
I, I mean, just a comment, you know, you, um, Mary, your last comment that you touched on about top-of-shop development.
Mm-hmm.
Hugely important, you know, I, I do think that that's a direction we absolutely should be looking at. You know, you look at the commercial sector and how can it help from a workforce standpoint?
Mm-hmm.
You know, top-of-shop development, I believe, is a, is a strong way to go with that.
You know, and it's so sweet because you could do it without changing what the site looks like.
That's right.
You know what I mean? It's, it's, it's a, it's a sweet concept.
There's a couple of spots right on Route Twenty, I think would be ideal for it.
You've got to have the ability to get the neighborhood behind it.
No, I understand.
And that's the problem. I mean, we just see what we went through to get accessory apartments. This is all well and good, but, no offense, but the people of this town aren't willing to do a lot of the things that we really recognize need to be done because it's all about in their backyard. Forest Road is not gonna get developed with anything because it's in their backyard. I mean, let's be honest. So these are all well and good ideas, but some of these things you're never gonna get done because you're gonna get pushed back from the neighborhoods.
Some of the spots that I'm thinking about, the buildings are falling into the ground. I, I, I'm shocked that the neighbors wouldn't want to see redevelopment if it was a potential.
I would agree, but we've seen it.
Jim, I get you.
Right. And, and the Community Housing Committee, um, it's, um, Lee Hamilton is, is, I'd like to recognize Lee, she's, uh, she's remoting in. Um, everybody else is kind of new on the Housing Committee. And they all have identified outreach and education as a priority activity for the committee. So I couldn't be more pleased. In fact, I was talking to the chair today, Lorraine Doyle, about starting a newsletter. Just a quick little blog, you know, because the, we got the draft Cape Cod Commission Regional Housing Strategy. Right? Um, and, and she was like, oh, that would be the perfect thing to have a little blog on, you know, people follow it, they know, they know where to go to look at it, da-da-da-da-da, and get kind of a following on it. And, you know, talk about the fun things.
Doesn't the town now have a new information officer?
Right, I was literally thinking the same thing.
We should be taking advantage of that resource.
That'd be nice if we could get some of her time, Laurie's time.
Just go knock on the door.
Okay. Thank you. I have permission.
I'm sure there are, yes, so many more important things than actually finding housing for the people who live here. We wouldn't want to encourage the town to have to.
Thing about Laurie, our communications person, I don't, I'm sorry, Laurie, I don't, I don't know your, your official title.
Communications Director.
Communications Director. She's really quick and she does things, she does a great job.
She's doing an excellent job.
You know, so I think if we can get, our committee can get a little bit of her time.
Five years, her office.
I didn't even know she had one.
You gotta read the papers, Jim.
Yeah.
I don't see any hands up over there, Will.
No, ma'am.
Okay. So we don't have any other public comments? Any other comments for, for Mary? Mary, do you have a good sense about these minor adjustments we would recommend to the plan and?
Yeah, I think, um.
Can we maybe summarize them a little bit?
Just because I think there's a lot of discussion and talk, but not necessarily a directive
of what you want changed.
We wanted to talk about the tax rate of Yarmouth compared to, um, regional towns. Um, and that, you know, it's, it's not an, uh, determinant of affordability.
Yes.
That's right.
A determinant of affordability, right?
Yeah, I don't even know that the sentence needs to be in there, to be honest with you. I don't know that it added anything in context. I, that's my thought when I read it. I, because.
Could be silent.
I, yeah.
So no comment, no change?
No, you're saying eliminate.
I believe bringing it to light is important right here. On, the tax rate's one thing, but the median income in town is another thing. That definitely is a determinant on your affordability of being able to pay your tax bill.
Your median household price is very significant from town to town.
That's right.
And then you're correlating tax rate.
And do you feel that was covered satisfactori, satisfactorily in this?
It was, it was much later, I think, uh, much later in the report. Yeah, I think.
The idea was it coming sooner.
Okay.
Coming sooner. And if it, yeah.
Sorry. You have a better idea where it should go than me?
I mean, if it was somewhere in the, in the same area of that, that tax rate comment.
Okay. All right.
So you want to expand upon that, just indicating that the tax rate does not necessarily mean the indicator of affordability?
If she wanted to comment on Yarmouth's tax rate, it's fine, but I don't think it needs to, it can't.
It's not relevant.
You can't make the statement that it, it.
Okay.
Makes us more, we're affordable because our tax rate is, is low, which it actually isn't. So if she wanted to compare it to the other towns, we're the third highest last year, fiscal year twenty-three. So the statement's not even correct as it stands, so she just needs to correct it.
Say, strike it.
Right, which is why, strike it or add, or correct it, or expand on it, include the median sale price in Yarmouth is the lowest. I mean, if, if she wanted to, by itself, that, that comment is not correct, and then it either needs to be expanded on, corrected, or make another comment so that it's relevant.
Let's add the comment about the median sale price. Let's add the comment about the median sale price.
Okay.
I, I would hesitate to, to
Sure.
Take it out without talking to Karen Sonnaborg.
Right.
As to why she put it in.
Tax, meaning the subject of the tax rate.
Yeah. I don't think it needs to be taken out, Mary. I do think it'd be important that you do touch on the fact of the median sale. And I'd strongly recommend you add the median income in town.
Um, yeah, well, the median income is the same for the whole region.
It's.
So Yarmouth's tax rate of 918 per thousand helps support greater affordability. I, that's not, that's not true. I don't know what that means. How does having that tax rate support greater affordability?
Well, our consultant feels that
Unless she goes on to mention that our, our median sale price is, is the lowest and most affordable.
They do get impacted by overrides. So there's probably some communities that had series of overrides that went through and their tax rate in property taxes are now higher than Yarmouth. I think that's the point she's making.
It just doesn't correlate, correlate to affordability, the tax rate by itself.
Does not.
I mean, Chilmark, Chilmark is like 50 cents.
It's a fact on an island, and we're trying to talk about, the island sits in a sea of other facts. And to just talk about the island and not talk about the sea in which the island is on top of is not, uh, accurate. And it is not a whole representation of the picture that we're, we're pretty convinced about.
Go ahead.
I guess I'm just saying is, I think if there's some, if these are a little bit more than just a, I'm, I'm just was wondering whether we could incorporate these into some type of motion to give the approval. But it sounds like maybe you guys want her to make, maybe you accept your red lines that have been accepted and then make these edits for a real quick review before you approve it? Or do you, or do you feel comfortable?
That would be fine, Kathy, in my estimation.
Sure.
I'm just concerned that they may have more.
Well, let's make sure we understand what it is. I mean, my personal preference would be to remove the entire statement with regards to
Okay.
Tax rates, because I don't think tax rates have any bearing on it.
That would be the simplest.
Yes, just take it out.
Just take it out.
And add in its place.
No, no, just take it, just take it out.
Yeah.
And, okay. And so then is Peter satisfied with how the plan covers median sale prices?
Yeah, it's, it's in there.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's in there, it's buried in there.
Just, is that on page 40?
We're hoping you would be more forward.
Well, sure. I think it's irrelevant when she's, I think it's more, I think it's a pretty relevant fact.
People's attention span tends to decline after page one.
I don't know how many people are gonna get to page 40 something of this thing.
Right, but in the first five pages, you might get it.
Right.
Which is why I liked your, I liked your suggestion.
You want the median house, house price included in the, kind of the executive summary part?
Yeah, because I think when she included it later in the report, it was with five other towns and it was a bar graph and it didn't really stand out. I mean, I think when she's citing all these relevant facts and making Yarmouth sound like we're not affordable and we're so much different than other towns. I think it's fair to note, our median sale price is the lowest.
Okay. All right, so we'll put that in the executive summary.
Okay.
You put the median in there already, you want something more?
Just that it, in comparison to other Cape towns, it's the lowest. So there's potential for natural affordability in Yarmouth. I think there was at one point.
Okay. I think page four, just changing the draft vision plan to vision plan. On page 113, modifying the fooling to following, and then softening the language on the short-term rental impacts on housing?
Yep.
Speaking of that, I'm, just a point of information, because I knew it was in there, thanks to you, I found it. But on page 88, it does talk about the tax on short-term rentals, which was passed in 2018, is a 6% tax. But Yarmouth has not enacted the 3% impact fee, which applies to operators that own at least two rental units.
Right.
So I just thought we could tie that in, in case, if it's relevant. But that number is in there if you're looking for it.
Mm-hmm.
Since we were, we know that, as you said, Joanne, or maybe Kathy said, it's a million and a half, I don't remember the exact number we're getting every year. But it is tied into a 6% short-term rental tax. And that's on page 88.
The last tax rule we had when I was on CEDC, it was a million 685. That was
Total, I think.
Total, that's right. And then it was divvied up between
Seventy-five.
Surgeon.
Oh, that's interesting, okay.
So your comment, Will, is that it's in there?
It's, we found it. I just, I knew it was in here, I just couldn't, but, so thankfully, when everybody's talking about other things, I'm able to burrow my way in some other places.
No, no change on that.
No, no, I wasn't, I'm sorry, it wasn't in the context of change, it was more in the context of just bringing the conversation back to.
That's where the 3% community impact fee reference.
I, I just, I just don't think we should be sugge- my comment again was
Right.
I don't think we should be suggesting recommendations before we've had the study.
Right.
Okay. Yep.
We shouldn't be kind of moving to conclusions.
Yep.
Because now they're talking about.
And I know you mentioned something about needing action items, but I think Have the next steps, I think it's not as formulaic as we'll have it in the LCP.
Not within this document, but once this is approved, somebody needs to take this out and go page by page and says, okay, we need to enact this 3%, who's doing that? Who's gonna move that forward? Are we just gonna leave this on this piece of paper and say, hey, this is what we should have done, but nobody did it? So as well as we write all this, if nobody doesn't do something with this, then you just wasted a year writing this because it's useless. If people don't take it and take action with, and there is some really good action, potential items here to really change the issue of housing.
Right.
But people need to take it next step.
Right. And it, and it, so it's like other departments in this town. You know, when things are going smoothly, they don't end up in a plan, right? Because there's no need to correct something, it, it, right.
Kathy, just as a comparison, and to Jim's point, you know, the OSRP process that we just went through, it literally says, here is our goal. Here are the sub-goals, and here are the next action, like it's built in now, is that because that's the department? The DCR requires it, so.
Even with potential funding sources.
Literally built into the OSRP where you have to say, this is what we're doing next and who's gonna do it. Unfortunately, that doesn't necessarily apply to every single document that comes to our attention.
I think the local comprehensive plan, we will certainly be, be providing that, that information. Maybe not necessarily detailed funding sources, it's easier to identify the funding sources for a little narrow, or versus the, everything in the community. But it doesn't sound like there's that many edits then.
No, that, I think that's it.
I'm just wondering, could, could there be a motion then? Basically, you're looking for, um, on page one, to note the median house compared, housing cost compared to other communities. Page four, change the draft vision to just the vision, the 2021 vision plan. Page 27, eliminate the reference to the tax rates. And then on 113, um, change the word from, to follow, following, and then soften the language on the short-term rental impacts on housing to avoid a pre-conclusion.
So the thing on 113 is more extensive than the other ones, right? Like rewriting this little bit here.
That's probably the only one that's, that's really, and I think, I think the intent from what Mary was saying was kind of what you were talking about.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I don't think that, that that's necessarily an issue. I just was wondering if maybe because we have identified basically these four or five things that need to get done, whether we could, you know, endorse it? Uh, this is up to Mary, to endorse it?
You endorse it, you can authorize the chair to approve the lang- the new language on page 113.
I, I think we have a good sense about the, there are four changes, Kathy, that we've cut?
Yeah.
We just referenced the page numbers in the motion and not get into the specifics of each page number? Would that be enough?
I, I think if you're comfortable with how I, how I read them out.
How you just read it, I think was just fine.
The page numbers down.
You can just say, you know, you are voting to endorse the amended housing, the, the housing production plan as amended by, and then I can list
That's fine.
What I listed and recommend the plan to the select board and the Department of Housing and Community Development for approval.
Yes, and I, I don't know if that's a big enough change to bring it back to the
No, I was hoping it wouldn't.
No.
I don't think so.
It's not for me. Anyone?
Nope.
And I would just endorse it.
With the changes.
You're no longer recommending it to anybody. You've already recommended it. The select board changed it, recommended it, now we're back to you to make sure that your endorsement still stands.
Did you just want to, so how do we get these changes?
We endorse it with the changes.
Endorse it as, with these four amendments.
So we make a motion to accept the amended November 2023 housing production plan with four small additional updates on the appropriate pages, as Kathy outlined?
Following four amendments, and then I would list them. Yeah. You don't need, you, I'm sorry, you don't need to recommend the plan to the select board and the Department of Housing and Community Development, you just want them to endorse the amended 2023 with the following four amendments.
Yep.
And do we need to have the chair review that to approve it?
That's, that, that, that's the only thing that I would, you know, recommend to the planning board. If you don't want it to come back, you could authorize the chair, or the chair could say
Chair or the chair of the select board?
No, that, that's your chair.
Oh, of course.
Or you can just say, you know,
It's a lot of chairs.
You know, as amended with, per these directives, directives.
As approved by the planning board chair.
Trust you have verified.
Yeah, that, I'm more comfortable with running it by your chair.
There you go.
Okay, whatever makes you comfortable, Mary.
I love that motion.
We just wanna move it.
Yes.
We just wanna get it going.
The chair of the select board and the select board member who suggested that item, and if they're fine with it.
Right.
We'll go forward, and if they want it on their agenda again, then we will revisit them.
Madam Chair, would you like a motion?
I would like a motion.
Do you want me to read in a motion and then some?
That would be a good idea.
Please do.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay.
To endorse the amended 2023 housing production plan with the following four amendments. And then I would list the ones, I don't wanna read them again.
You can say the page numbers.
Page one, page four, page 27, and page 113, as approved by the planning board chair.
Love it. So moved. Second. You can decide it. Sorry, Madam Chair, seconds. Madam Chair, seconds.
No, she doesn't need discussion, chairs don't usually second.
Well, she wanted to. How, how can I, the project with the chair.
See, I don't, I don't even know the rules.
Serve at the pleasure of the chair.
Any discussion? Roll call. Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Peter Slovac?
Aye.
Ken Smith?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
That's amazing work.
Five years before I meet with you again. Okay.
And thank you to, is it, we should also thank Lee and Myra and all the other nice people who are here.
Thank you so much.
They did, you guys did a great job, a lot of work, really.
Come back next year. That's right. You too.
Yeah, not next year, though.
All right.
Three, Mary.
Right, it says three to five years.
That's from here, three.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, Mary.
Thank you, Kathy, for managing that
Yeah.
And moving it along, I appreciate that.
I always hate to bring people back because they're so close and they've gone to so many people.
I, 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 that's good.
Of course, yeah, I think we, we all got one.
Next on our agenda, I, I believe are just meeting minutes. Unless you, I don't think we had anything else, right? Meeting minutes, Kathy?
Trying to find an agenda.
May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of December 6th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Peter Slovac?
Aye.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Ken Smith?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley? Chair, aye. Committee updates? Any committee updates?
Yeah, I'll jump in from capital budget. We had our meeting with the select board back in December, just before Christmas, and well-received. Um, the select board did thank the work of Judy and everybody else. Sandy, thank you, um, for all the efforts that were put into it. And, uh, there was a lot of work done, but, uh, I think the process is getting a lot easier with the new programs the town has put in place. And I found it extremely interesting.
Great.
Well, CEDC presented their, to the selectmen before the holidays, uh, their, their plan and their goals for the coming year.
Did you wanna talk about the tourism revenue preservation fund?
Um, not really. That's a, that's a, that's a, it's more fun to watch the meeting, probably.
Yes, it, uh, it was fun to, to watch, um, both meetings, actually.
Both, both meetings, yeah.
Both meetings.
What was the, what were the issues?
How we spend our money.
How we, how, how we
Meetings before Christmas.
Yeah. Well, no, the, the most recent board is selecting the meeting was last week, was this week.
It was?
No, last week.
It was December 23rd was the meeting that CEDC was in front of the, because we went just before you.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah. I watched, I was, I watched on TV.
It was, no, no, it was
19th.
Is that what it was, 19th?
December 19th.
It was in December, I know it was just before Christmas.
Was it literally the week before Christmas?
Yeah.
I thought it was like literally the week before Christmas. Yeah, because 23rd or something, it was, or 20th, 20th, or whatever it was. Because we went, the capital budget went first.
Because Christmas was a Monday.
Okay, so, yeah, the 19th.
Anyway.
Watching, is that what you're saying?
Yes, give me my money or I'm taking my event somewhere else.
Oh, oh my.
Yeah.
I surrender.
So did that?
No, they, um, the, it, it, there was a lot, there was, uh, the parade, the St. Patrick's Day parade. It was a spicy topic, so.
I had heard it's moving to Barnstable.
There was, there was, there was talk that that might have happened. The, the CEDC followed as they do for all of their groups, um, you know, the protocol for having them come in and, and meeting with them. And the St. Patrick's Day parade was, um, previously, I guess, endorsed by the selectmen. And, and I think that should, uh, it was communicated that maybe that should have been given maybe different consideration outside of how the CDC normally goes about awarding their funds.
They should have been given special treatment.
It was the, the tourism funds.
That one-day event is very important.
That, that document was written into the bylaws of CEDC of how the
Right.
How that stuff, the money is divided and how it's approved. And it was very specific in how it's done that way, so there's nobody can come back and say they got unfair treatment.
Right. And the CEDC chair, Steve, did a great job, I thought, in following exactly what you just described. And there's talk now, I, I believe, that their selectmen are gonna create a separate fund or line item where they fund parades or like parades. Because I had brought up the, um, the, the parade that they canceled for the Yarmouth Seaside Festival many years ago for this, for funding reasons. And, and now maybe there'll be a fund established for these, I, I forget how they described it, the, 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 the events that require quite a bit of town resources.
Police and fire details.
Police and fire, and the selectmen will have maybe more discretion over, you know, of funding those sort of events ahead of time, or on their own timetable. So, yeah. Anyway, so it was. Exciting meeting.
In the, you know, in the past, and Ken, you and I have this experience where
That's right.
The, the committee acted somewhat autonomously and recommended projects to the select board without much discussion. We went through a very thorough process. And, uh, over the years, the board has, the select board has wanted more control over the allocation of those funds.
No, I agree.
And they're now moving in the direction of
My, my last year as chair, that was what had happened, and I'll be candid with you, Joanne, I'm not considering sugarcoated on TV, that's why I stepped down.
Yeah.
I said, if they wanna run it, then they should just run it, what do you need me showing up here every Tuesday for?
And that's, they've, they're carving, what I understand, having watched it, is the selectman board, select board
Yes.
Was they wanna carve out some major events, just as Peter had said, seaside, St. Patrick's Parade. And have the town, um, authorize the funding for them, rather than through tourism.
And very candidly, my feeling about it altogether is, let them do that. Because as far as I'm concerned, yes, parades and seaside festivals and all that do a wonderful job for a day or a weekend or whatever. But is that really promoting the economic development of the town of Yarmouth?
Nope.
And, you know, you can argue it either way, but I don't think in the long-term benefit for the town, spending as much time and resources on parades and festivals is appropriate. And so that was part of the other reason why I just said, select board wants to run parades, let them have it, so.
It's not what we envisioned when I created the CEDC.
No, it's what, and I, the, the last meeting in front of the select board, there's chairs sitting right over there, that's exactly what I get scolded for that exact statement, Jim, saying this isn't what the, and, but that's where CEDC had morphed. I'm not sure if you were at that last meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it is what it is.
There was some, there was some fireworks, for sure.
Madam Chair, I have a slightly less contentious committee update. Or I should say, a committee update containing less contentious issues, how's that? I am the informal liaison to our friends at the library planning committee. And, uh, there's definitely, I attended a focus group before Christmas at the South Yarmouth Library. There are multiple focus groups going on, including, I was happy to hear, a focus group of teenagers. Yes, there are teenagers in our town that we need to engage with as we consider the future of library services. And, uh, there's also been a pretty comprehensive survey, yet another, but this is all on the path towards, um, I'll say it because it deserves to be said. Moving towards a one library solution for our beautiful town, if possible. Um, and of course, that's all connected to a huge state funding program, um, which we would like to become eligible for. But we will not become eligible for in a multi-library solution. eligible for in a multi-library solution. So we'll see where that leads, but that is continuing to grind on, and there are lots of amazing people doing lots of amazing work. Oh, and the next RAC meeting is until next week, so I guess I won't have anything more until our next, oh, the next Planning Board meeting.
Mr. Saban, anything?
Just we're getting close to a drive-in site. Go ahead, Kathy.
Well, we are, we are out to bid.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, and we have.
I wanted you to be able to say that. You've worked so hard. Just for the record, for everybody who's not watching or is watching, this woman has worked very, very hard to get this to where it is today, so I wanted her to be the one to say that we're out to bid.
Yeah, a lot of people have worked really hard for many, many years.
I wouldn't be there without your work.
Yeah, it needed, it needs champions, and I think the, the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee and staff, you know, we're really trying to, to move it forward. Obviously, it's a, it's a goal of the Board of Selectmen in past years, obviously, it's important, but we should have filed sub-bids because we do have some vertical construction with our restroom on the 17th, and then the general contractor on the 24th. We have some things, we might get delayed a week or something like that, but that's kind of where we are, so we're hoping to award it and start construction in March.
May I ask you just a quick follow-up question? As an operating park within our town, in, let's say, 12 to 18 months from now, does that mean that DPW and other departments are going to have to go to the Finance Committee and/or readjust their budgets to operate a pretty large facility that is not currently in existence?
Correct. It's not going to be done until like June of 2025.
Right, so I mean.
It's really going to start in fiscal, but you're right.
There'll be a concurrent process within the town to figure out how do we afford to them, or who's going to run it, and where is that going to fit as an operating entity within the town's budget?
Correct. I mean, the Parks Department would be responsible.
Our friends at the Finance Department had, had a few questions about that.
There's all, yeah, I know they.
My apologies.
I'm well aware.
Well, I actually read the Finance Committee minutes. You're welcome, everybody.
You know, the.
And, and it just seemed like a very reasonable question, which is.
No, there's a why.
It's amazing that we've come to this point, and it's still now, now, now we need to figure out the, how do we fit it into the, under the tent.
Just like the splash pad, but in a much smaller level, for sure. There are, there is a lot of things that, once we start construction, that we still need to look at. I mean, we have to develop the policy for the events. I mean, we have an interim one, but now we start need to also looking at, well, what kind of fees would we be charging for events that would be held there? Because obviously, there's a lot of revenue sources here, there's also plank sales that are a possibility, and naming rights, and all of those things that we need to look at a little bit more closely in the next, in the next year.
It even ties into what Ken was saying, not that I'm trying to go back to CDC, but it almost feels like, where is this park going to live in terms, in terms of operation and oversight within the town? Because it is a park, but it's also an economic development opportunity, location, right? And it's also a recreational facility, like it's got lots of different uses, and my, my question would be, and good news, we have 18 months to figure it out, is how is it going to be managed and, and by whom, or by what?
I think when you get right down to it, Town Administration is going to make that decision. It's kind of like who runs, who does parks and wrecks, who does cemeteries?
Oh, sure.
So I think in the end, you know, we're going to make recommendations of, of things of how to raise some additional revenues, and, and like Kathy said, you know, ways to, to fund some of this.
Yeah.
But when it gets right down to it, if those funds go to the general fund, then we've got no say over it. I mean, if you can do, I mean, so there are some things that need to be ironed out as far as that is concerned, but when it gets right down to it, and the money, and who's going to run what, Town Administration gets to decide, no, you're now parks, and now you're parks and cemetery, and now you're this or that. So I think in the end, they're going to have, you know, some decisions to make, but they will be the ones to decide that.
So in other words, the committee that you guys have been running for a long time doesn't have operational authority or operational role.
No.
It was really to get the ball to the one-yard line.
You don't want to run it, Jim?
No.
I think they can help with the policy and, and, you know.
Yeah, right, of course.
Giving some ideas of fees.
It was your vision to begin with collectively.
And that type of thing. I also know that the Chamber of Commerce is also kind of looking at all the event spaces in town and trying to, to identify, you know, how they might be better run or how they might be tied together, so I think there's some, some assistance with that, and maybe it's something where we hire the Chamber through the, their contract, through the marketing, to help assist with, with something like that. So there are definitely things that need to be.
Wheels within wheels.
Yeah.
But it is exciting, and again, congratulations on all of.
Yeah, the charge of the committee was utilization, you know, what are we going to do with this property?
It wasn't management oversight.
No, and, and that's something we're going to have to have a discussion with the selectmen about is, who does that next stage? Is it the Drive-In Site Committee, or do you create a new committee, or?
How many, how many years has this been in the works? 30?
Well, I mean, if you think about when it was originally purchased in 1986, for this, for this very purpose, we get sidetracked.
28 years?
But the Drive-In Site Committee has been in effect since 2015.
Right, and that wasn't meant on you, I just meant.
No, no, the whole process has been.
One of the downstreams of the site, so.
Never been closer, Ken. Something happening there.
It's like curing polio with that.
A bit of a stretch, Jim, just so you know.
That's what they say about polio, we're that close to curing it.
Yeah.
And we're that close to getting this done.
Are we still on board member items, Madam Chair, or?
We're on committee updates, and I.
That's all I've got to say, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Saban. I have one update on the Community Preservation Committee. We met on December 13th. We had an executive session because it was regarding an appraisal report on a piece of property that had been submitted by an applicant for the town to buy as open space. So we had received an appraisal on the property. It's a piece of property that a family owns that has no access, no road access, but is next to Conservation Trust land, over by the Big Cranberry Bog, Route 6, and not Great Western, but North Main Street. You go over the high, North Main Street to.
Oh, good, I know you.
Yes.
Great Western, the Big Bog on the right, all over in there is conservation land as well, and it was a three, four-acre parcel that this family wanted to ask the town to purchase with CPA funds because it abutted Conservation Trust land. So we reviewed the proposal, and we've, no decision was made on it. We do have an appraisal in hand, and the appraisal was going to be shared with the property owner to see what next steps they wanted to take, so. It was an interesting discussion from the, from a couple of different points of view. One, anyone in town who has a piece of property that they can't develop, I don't, I don't want to call it, I'll put it in quotations, swamp, wants to come to the town and offer it for CPA money to buy it, you can't get in it, you can't use it, you can't, you don't have access to it, it's wetlands, why would the town want to buy it other than to prevent it from being developed when it doesn't have likely developable capacity? We, we left that as an open question, and we left the request as an open request to see where the, the proposer might come back and want to donate it to the town, but we did not make a decision to allocate any funding for it for annual town meeting.
Thank you for that approach, because I can tell you that in our past, we have plenty of marshland that this town has bought where realtors have stood up and said, there's no such thing as an unbuildable lot, so we bought it, and there it is, and so thank you for taking that approach, because we have bought a lot of.
Have we?
Marshland or swamp land, as you would say, under the idea of, you know, some people got great views, it'll stay forever because.
But it was, I have to say, on the committee, you know, we have members of Conservation Commission and, and others who want to protect as much land as possible from development of any kind. And then there were people like me who had the opinion that this might not be such a great purchase idea. Investment for the town. So that's why we, we said, we'll get the appraisal back to the, to the proposer and see, we'll put it back in their court, and it may come back to us. It was an interesting, interesting discussion. This is unlike the property that we CPA purchased in the last round at, at Annual Town Meeting, the property on Higgins Crawl.
Higgins, yeah.
That was subdivided, owned by the Catholic Church.
Oh, yeah.
Subdivided 13th, several subdivision, property opportunities there, but sitting right on top of the aquifer, or nearby, and we thought that was a good, that was a good purchase, so. It was an interesting, an interesting.
They were sewer-ing in there, who cares?
There you go.
Why are we building affordable housing there? And when you're sewer-ing it, you don't have to worry about your aquifer protection, but let's buy it anyway.
Hmm.
We can have housing. We can't keep buying all the land and then say, you know, rest all the housing.
Well, no.
We own already a third of ourselves, I mean, come on.
So that's all I have, Board Member Items.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you just circle back, just, I'm sorry, to circle all the way back, but Will, can you just, are we going to have a shovel in the ground for wastewater at all this in 2024?
Magic Eight Ball says, let me attend the next meeting, which is, which is on Monday, and I will have an answer for you on the 7th.
I'll circle back.
No, I'll have an answer for you on the 17th when we come back.
I'm going to hold you to it.
Well, I mean, I will, I will do my job.
Just a curiosity question.
Yes, I would say, yes, Magic Eight Ball is still cloudy, but.
Possibly maybe.
Looking for answers. Thank you for asking. No, I will, I will hopefully know much more. The good news is groundwater discharge permits got approved.
I thought that was the stumbling block.
Which is what we talked about a month ago.
Yeah.
It was, but you know, there's other little hurdles that.
Four-month stumbling block.
Yes, I was going to say, there's other little hurdles that are in there, but I'll know more after Monday.
Board Member Items. Anyone?
I had two quick ones, which is, did, first of all, thank you, and thanks Dolores for sending us the ZBA decisions as they come. Did I, I don't know if I saw this or not, so I wanted some clarification. Is the J. Mart decision being appealed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That was what I, I thought I saw that, but I wanted to make sure. The, the second thing was, I did notice on the Select Board agenda for next week, and I've been waiting, but it's taken some time, is two different, one is a presentation and one's a discussion about the future of Matta Key's Middle School. One's a discussion about, from the school department, I believe, about, there's presentations by the school folk, which I didn't quite understand. So I might have misread that, maybe I did.
I think it's a Matta Key School redevelopment, it's not the school.
They don't own it.
They don't own it anymore.
Right, that's why, so, but then later in the Select Board agenda, it's, which I guess will be coming out tomorrow or Friday, it did talk about the actual discussion about the reuse committee finally starting to pop its head out of its groundhog hole, which it's been in for 18 months.
They haven't appointed anybody.
That's what I mean, but at least we're at the point where it's reached the Select Board agenda, and I only bring that up, Madam Chair, because it's a pretty big opportunity for our entire town, and it has many, many crossroads go through, not to mention.
Housing.
Recreation, not to mention, right, the future of the rail trail, the housing, the police department, the, it also ripples across to its neighbor at the ME Small School, which I noticed finally got some emergency roof repair money, thanks to the Finance Committee, but also got rejected yet again by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So there is, I just would encourage everyone to keep a very close eye and/or participate in the future of that project, because, that property, excuse me, because it has a lot of ripple effects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other Board Member Items? Kathy, were you going to talk about our two meetings coming up on LCP? What do you want me to do that?
I was just going to say that we have interviews of the two firms that submitted proposals.